Not the first time, but this was the worst.
Good evening, everyone. Could we call our meeting to order, please? All right, it is December 3rd. It is, what, 7:03? And in tradition, we always start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge. So could you all please stand? Remove hats. Each and every one of you has issues, all of us have issues. I pray that all your prayers are answered. Your issues are resolved, especially through this season. I pray for your safe travels home and any traveling you're going to do through this time. I pray for the protection of all, to include all stages of life. And in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, Wendy, please.
Danny Wilcox. Kevin Kirkwood. Van Sands. DeeDee Shot-Grease. Robert Politek. John Gresham. John Waller. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Brenda, turn off our cell phones. Okay, staff report. Do we have anything to report? Please, Stephanie. Jennifer.
Good evening, sir. I will just report that since your last meeting, the Board of County Commissioners met on November 13th and heard a number of items. They heard the ECE, EC East Metro Districts, Industrial Tower West, Simla, SUR, and Variance, the Heartland Pines, SUR, and the Triple Acres rezoning, and those were all approved.
Thank you. And I take it we have no consent agenda items, correct? All right, this portion is the citizen comments. What I would ask, this section is about comments unrelated to any application tonight. So seeing none? Okay, we'll go on to the next one. We have a set of meeting minutes? You have the October 15th minutes? Do we have some, did we review them? Okay. See any issues? Okay, could we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I recommend that we approve the October 15th meeting minutes as written.
Do we have a second? Okay. Can we forego reading of the minutes? Okay, all right. Thank you all, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're entering into our public hearing process, so give you a little bit of an idea. We're quasi-judicial board, we're a volunteer group. We're Citizens Advisory Board. That's what, how we exist as, it's in statute. Essentially, what we're here to do is we judge the application based on the zoning regs, subdivision regulations, those are the two regulations that apply. What can come out of this meeting is a recommendation only. A recommend to approve, a recommend to deny, or recommend to approve with conditions. So with that, we will start into our hearing process. And I think first one, on the hearing notice, is our Ingalls rezon, correct? Who will be presenting that? Okay. Oh, and I, just how it, how the hearing actually goes. Our CDS department will present the application. We will ask then the applicant to stand up and present their parts. Then we will ask for public comment. We will take all public comment, take notes, close public comment down, and then try to answer the questions that came up in public comment through interaction with the applicant and our CDS staff. And after that, we will participate in a question-answer process. And then the final step, we will vote. Okay, sorry I didn't explain that initially, so, thank you.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Kelsey Lanham, and I am with the Elbert County Planning Department. Tonight, I will be presenting the Ingalls rezon case, case number RZ-2024-2599. The subject property is located at 25995, County Road 5, in Elbert, Colorado. It is just over 40 acres in size, and the applicant is Camille Courtney on behalf of the property owners. They are requesting to rezone the entire parcel from agriculture to agriculture residential. Looking back on this project, they had their pre-application meeting back in April of this year. Their community meeting was held in June. Their referral period was July through August, and all noticing requirements met Elbert County zoning regulations. At the community meeting, there were three citizens present. One was in opposition and two were neutral. The major concerns was that the desire for the area to remain rural. Since then, no further public comment has been received. So in the next two slides, I'll have like an overview of the map, and the subject property is depicted by the little red star. It's a little hard to see, but it's up in the upper left-hand corner. But the subject property is about 3/4 mile to the east of the Douglas County border line and approximately six miles to the northwest of the town of Elbert. The majority of the surrounding properties are agriculture. To the south is the Kelly Air Park PUD. And also to the south is a cluster of agriculture residential zone properties as well. And here is an overview of their rezon exhibit. Like I mentioned, the entire 40-acre parcel, it's outlined in the red border. That is what is being proposed to be rezoned from agriculture to agriculture residential. Currently on the property, there is a barn, and that is being proposed to remain. During the referral process, the following agencies responded, and there are no outstanding objections, all comments have been addressed. And with that, in the Elbert County zoning regulations, Article 3, Section 4, Section C 4, there is criteria that a rezon must follow. These are the summarized versions of those. A, the rezon would be consistent with the goals of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. The rezon is consistent. B, the rezon would be compatible with surrounding land uses. The proposed rezon is consistent with surrounding land uses. The surrounding properties are zoned agriculture, PUD, and less than a mile away is a cluster of agriculture residential properties. C, the rezon would not adversely impact public services. The rezon would not impact public services. They were part of the referral process, Public Works, Public Health, and there were no outstanding objections from either. D, the rezon would not adversely impact the envi, would not impact the environment. The rezon would not impact the environment. E, the rezon would not create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden existing road system. The rezon would not create unreasonable traffic. Public Works was a referral agency during this and required no improvements to be done. And F, the rezon would not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. The proposed rezon would not be detrimental to those in Elbert County now or in the future. Now, based on the review of the approval criteria found in the zoning regulations and the findings in the staff report, staff recommends approval with the following conditions for the Ingalls rezon. Condition number one, the applicant will be required to remove the public hearing signs within seven days of a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. Number two, the rezon will not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the rezon exhibit is recorded. Three, recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within 180 days of the Board of County Commissioners's approval. And finally, number four, prior to recordation, the rezon exhibit must comply with all Elbert County zoning regulation standards for rezon exhibits. And that concludes my presentation. The applicants are present tonight if the commission has any questions.
Thank you. The applicant, please.
Good evening. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Camille Courtney. I'm the applicant, spoken with it. I'm a patient and staff.
Questions about the conditions of approval? They're very normal and standard, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of us.
Thank you. What we'll do is we'll ask for public comment, and then we'll see if any questions arise, all right? Okay, thank you. Now, at this point, public comment on the rezon. Okay, seeing none, we'll close that. So we go across the board here. Do we have questions over here? John?
Only thing I was going to mention was that's in Elbert Fire District in Sitikawas. I was a long ways from there. I don't know if that makes any difference to anything, but need to note that probably.
I can review the referral agencies and confirm. So if you want to give me one moment, and we can go around with other questions and come back to that.
Yeah, good kid. Yeah, good kid.
I really don't have any questions. I don't have any questions.
I neither.
I guess I don't have any.
Just a quick question. I noticed that there's a lot of, you know, forty acre plots around. And it's about a mile. There are other, you know, Kelly Air Strip, whatever they call it.
Kelly Air Park.
Yeah, Air Park, yeah.
You had three people show up at the community meeting. How was that, how was that most specifi, most likely?
I can answer that.
Actually, it would be, yeah, that would go to CDS.
We're given a list by the assessor's office of all the people that live within a certain radius, and they're given a notification, and we have to have it out in so many days before the public hearing, and then we sign an affidavit, notarize that, that that was accomplished, so that's what we did.
I was reading the regulations, and it seems like in this case, a quarter mile didn't broke down for my foot.
We just follow the code, what is required for us to do. I think there was 13 different property owners. And then the individuals that showed up weren't adjacent, actually, they were quite distance away. And I would note that just adjacent to this property to the south has also been changed from MAG to AR.
That was my only question, I was curious as to.
And then we.
How it was impacted on it. I'd heard that there might be some complaints from the neighbors about dropping it down from the MAG to AR.
No, we just comply with the code.
So your answer was the property directly to the south is also AR?
Yes, it just went through, it was earlier, I think, this year, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
For what?
Property to the south.
Um, I don't know specifics about that property. We'd have to look into that, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Yeah, because you were saying that if you're changing the tone of the neighborhood, and when it does apply, the question kind of, the question of, the operation also.
Well, and also the presentation doesn't show it.
We can pull up the map to see if it has gone through the process, but at the time of grabbing the snippets of the zoning maps, it might have just not been updated by the assessor's office at that time, but we can look into that real fast. But to circle back on your question about the Elbert Fire, it was just a typo on the screen, and Elbert Fire was contacted, and they did not have any objections.
You have a question?
I did have a question. Did you reach out to the Kelly Air Park specifically? Were they in the?
They were not within the required radius from the assessor's office per the code that I'm aware of. Yeah. It was in Ranchland News, and we did have a community meeting at the library as well, but. And there's giant yellow signs in front of the property, you've seen them, they're huge, two of them.
I'm just concerned about any effect that it might have on the plane at the air park.
How many miles away from it is?
Well, per staff, I haven't measured it, but it's roughly a mile to the south of us, and we're on the west side. Yeah, we're on the west side of County Road 5, and they're on the east side, so the flight pattern is not directly over us or near us.
I used to live in an airport place, we were right next to the landing.
Yeah.
Well, and considering in Kelly Air Park, they're right next to Landing Strip 2.
Yeah. Their homes are right there.
Any other questions?
To go back to Commissioner Kirkwood's question about the rezoning, we just pulled up the map, and it does not show any recent division of land or rezoning. And when the MyLars do get recorded, the assessor is pretty on top of that and updates it, you know, within a week or two. So we are not seeing any division or rezoning for that property to the south of this subject property.
Any further questions? Okay, can we call for a vote? Anybody have the list of things? You've got the.
Everybody's got a cheat sheet now, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you very much for that. I move that the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners for case number SUR-2024-2522.
Oops, I think we've got to go the one above. Yeah.
Oh!
Ingalls rezon. Yeah.
I wrote notes on one and read from the other one.
Oh, sorry.
We're doing a really good job of being efficient and improving the other person's.
Hey, I'm good with that, we'll improve that one, and we'll be out of here.
Yeah.
That's.
All right, retake.
Can you make sure the stipulation to update the records and check the records is part of that?
You want to put a condition on it?
Condition.
Okay, well then draft a condition.
The surrounding land use record needs to be updated to reflect changes, recent changes.
Potential recent changes, you know, if there's a discrepancy in the overall presentation, right?
Right.
Just be sure they got the language.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, if we can clarify real quick. We've checked sort of the records that we have available at the moment, and it doesn't appear that there have been any rezones in the immediate area. Are you wanting us to do?
Double-check it and make sure that there's not something.
That there's not something else that has been rezoned in that area? Okay, directly adjacent to this property?
Directly to the south, is that correct?
Directly to the south.
Oh, then it hasn't been done, hasn't been recorded.
It didn't get recorded.
So then it really, where do you want to go with your condition? Withdraw?
Yeah, I will withdraw.
Okay.
Withdraw.
Okay.
All right, take two.
Shoot.
Ready, Kelsey? All right. So, I move that the planning commission makes a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners for case number RZ-2024-2599.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
John? Okay, any other discussion? No, we withdrew the condition. The existing conditions on them? Okay. You want us to include that?
So it's only the additional condition withdrawn, but the three standard conditions about recordation?
Yes, those are all included. The only thing we're withdrawing was a condition that was proposed.
Regarding the.
Okay. Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. John? Okay, thank you. The next one is Christmas in the Sticks. Are you, Jennifer? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item tonight is an SUR called Christmas in the Sticks. This is case SUR 2024-2522. Quick summary, the subject property is 40 acres located on the south side of Highway 86. It is zoned agriculture. And the SUR request is for an amusement, entertainment venue, and we'll get into some more details of what that includes. The approximate location is about 16 miles east of Kiowa on Highway 86. And you can see the subject property on this map, it has a yellow star, and it is surrounded by other property that's also zoned agriculture. And here is a site photo of the property. And so a summary of what's being requested, the SUR that's requested is for essentially a drive-through Christmas light path. This project would operate about 30 days a year, obviously limited in scope and timing from approximately late November till early January. And just to clarify for a second, we are not talking about this year. That's, that's not on the table. It just happens to be within that window at this moment, so I did want to clarify that. The project would also include a Santa's Village area, and all the structures on the property would be temporary due to this limited timeframe. They do have an SUR exhibit, and I thought this was a little bit hard for you to see in this setting, so I have a very colorful version for you to sort of outline what's being presented here. Again, the site itself is 40 acres. The yellow sort of border, if you will, is the drive-through path. There is a parking area outlined in blue. The Santa's Village area is shown in red. And then the access point has a green circle up at the top of the screen along Highway 86. And there are several purple diagrams to indicate screening or fencing to help block any potential lights. And there's also an emergency access that runs through the center of the site that's shown in that orange dotted line. So if there were to be some type of situation, emergency could cut through the center and not be stuck in the line with other patrons viewing the lights. A timeline of this project, we had a pre-application meeting back in May, a community meeting at the end of July, and then the project went through two review cycles through the months of September and October. The notice requirements were met per the Elbert County zoning regulations. And the project was reviewed by all of the agencies on the screen. All of these agencies did provide comments, and all of the comments have been addressed at this time. There was, at the community meeting that was mentioned, there were four residents in attendance. They were opposed to the project. The concerns that were brought up were noise, light, and traffic. I will say that from the time of the pre-application meeting and the community meeting, and even the first submittal to what you're seeing tonight, the project has been modified and reduced to be more specific to just, just what you're seeing tonight. An additional comment was received in August. That was before the official submittal came in, and that is a part of your packet. So the approval criteria for the SUR or special use by review are in Article 3 of the Elbert County zoning regulations. I've summarized the approval criteria. They are fully outlined in the staff report with findings for each one. Criteria A is that the, the use is in harmony and compatible with the surrounding area. Again, as a, I don't want to call it a temporary use because they are requesting the approval to do this, but the timeframe is limited. Therefore, it could be found that is, is compatible with the surrounding area. Letter B, no undue burden on infrastructure. All of the review agencies that are appropriate for infrastructure were included, and there were no objections. Letter C, not, the use would not unduly increase traffic or burden on the road systems. Both Elbert County Public Works and CDOT were a part of this review. The applicant has received an access permit from CDOT and worked pretty extensively with them about what, how that this process would need to work with them and what their requirements are, so they will be required to meet any CDOT requirements. Letter D, that the use would not cause air, odor, noise, water, or light pollution. It's not believed that this use would cause any of those. Letter E, sanitation requirements are met. The only sanitation for the site is onsite portable restrooms that, and it's outlined that they, how they would be maintained, and then that's obviously for a temporary period only. Letter F, that the use is adequately landscape buffered and screened. There is an extensive amount of trees on the site, and I highlighted a couple of the additional screening fences that are proposed for any adjacent properties from headlights and things like that during the limited operating hours. Letter G, that the use would not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the current or future inhabitants of Elbert County. It is not believed that that would be the case. And letter H, that any supplemental standards are met, and there are no supplemental standards for this proposed use. Therefore, based on the review of the approval criteria found in the Elbert County zoning code, review of the application and the findings in the staff report, staff does recommend approval with conditions of the Christmas in the Sticks special use by review. The three conditions that are recommended are the typical conditions that you often see, that the applicant will take down the public hearing signs following a decision by the Board of County Commissioners, that the fees have to be paid, approvals of conditions have to be met, and the exhibit is recorded within the appropriate timeframe. That concludes the staff presentation. Staff's available to answer any questions. The applicant is also present to speak or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. All right, the applicant, please, if you could.
Hi, how are you today? Thank you for having.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Danielle and I am representing our family and speaking about why we're here. So, we really love Christmas and it's been a dream of ours to be able to build something like this. My husband's from Texas and this is a pretty common event, thank you, that happens out there. So, we just thought, how fun would it be? So, we have ran out of room in our front yard and so we wanted to get more area to be able to do that. And also, we love the amount of people we get to meet, the community that it brings together for people. And, you know, the Lord put this on our heart and he placed us at this property and we are just really grateful for that. And so, we're just following what we believe is our calling to be able to bring community together and to just be a blessing. That's really what our hope is for being able to go forward with this event, because we just love the joy it brings people overall. I know sometimes, as you mentioned in prayer, this can be a difficult time for people and we want to eliminate that with just a small thing they can come to do. And part of what we're hoping for is on the second half, when people leave, they get to hear the true meaning of Christmas and we have a plan on how to hopefully get to communicate that to people in a, what's the word I'm looking for? Sorry, this is very nerve-wracking. In a way that is palatable, if you will. So, that's it.
All right, thank you. What we'll do is we'll call for public comment.
Okay, great.
And be prepared to answer questions if we have some.
Amazing, thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, public comment on the SUR here.
If you could sign in also, please.
Okay.
And if he could, your name, your address, and normally what we like to do is, if he could, keep it to three minutes, please.
Okay, for comment topic, just Christmas light, Christmas lights work?
Oh, on the sign-up sheet, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey Jennifer, could you throw the map back up, please?
Absolutely.
So, I've found out about this project a couple of months ago, I guess. I was, I was pretty excited about it, to be honest. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, I'm Jared Russo. I live near Freeze Road and County Road one-ten, down the road. It was a couple of months ago that I came aware of the, what they were planning to do with the Christmas lights and so forth. And I, I love Christmas, I love Christmas lights, I love Christmas light drive-throughs. I was born in Texas and we actually used to do those things, so, go figure. And they've, they've got a few, I've seen in the area around here before. I think probably one of the biggest thing that excited me on it was talking about doing a kind of cowboy Christmas light, you know, ride-through. So, you know, people can come and bring their horses and their trailers and ride through like a Santa's Village and a Christmas, like, how freaking cool in Elbert County is that? Like, I mean, I, I, I do a lot of dirt work and so I meet a lot of people and I've mentioned it to some of my customers. They thought that was the coolest thing they'd ever heard, like, we'd go multiple times to go ride there. That seems like the most awesome thing ever, it's like, I got friends that'll go from all over to come do that. People always looking for excuses to come and take their horses on a ride. But, at night, to see Christmas lights and drive, ride through some train, like, how, how amazing is that? I think, you know, kind of a cool thing, we have somebody that's willing to kind of go out on a limb and, you know, provide something like that to the county. I think it's, you know, good positive exposure, it's, I mean, it's kind of an Elbert County thing, right? Especially with like a horse riding and stuff, we do rodeos and everything else and I'm always more than happy to have people come and bring their money to our town and support us however we can, right? So, I don't know, that's my thought, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other public comment?
My name is Sean Snelling and I live off of County Road one-oh-five. I was at one of the previous meetings and got a chance to hear the sales pitch. The previous map, if you could bring that up. The map's pretty clear. It's Agon Houses. We moved from Littleton to Kiowa, wanted more land, more privacy, we went east. The community out there is just ranchers, farmers, homesteaders. We're already fighting, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the map, XL Energy. Learning that there's large swath of land that's been sold off to a developer just to the west of us. We understand the sprawl is coming, but all we can do is stand and fight as the best we can. We moved out there for the rural and to get away from business. Now, I'm not going to try and point fingers, but a lot of this is a little misleading. The permit right now is for forty acres, they actually purchased a hundred and twenty acres. So, at the last meeting, they commented about how this was a Christmas thing. Using their own words, they said, if this pans out, they would like to expand, do stuff for other times of the year, for October, figure out different holidays. They told us, their own words, expected traffic of two hundred cars per day. Now, I don't know if it was Elbert County or if it was CDOT, they've already done a traffic survey at that exact location because a previous owner tried to open up a business there also. I don't know the details, we went to that meeting, but they ended up pulling out and selling the property. All I can say is, we don't want business out there. And once one foot gets in the door, it's a special use permit, but it's a business. There's no plans to build a home, there's no plan to be a part of the community other than, they say they want to give back to the community. There's no giving back, it's a business. And once one gets in the door, it's all coming. So... But truth be told, like I said, those are the words that we were told before and I'm saying now that it's being scaled back, that's today. I don't know anybody who goes into business to get smaller and not grow. So, I like Christmas lights too, but I go to the city for that.
Pardon me, Chair, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Further comment?
I think you can read it. I'm Tom Stoller, I'm at Comanche Creek in one-fifty over there, a little bit north of all that. I just met Jared tonight and I'm, I'm with him, that sounds like a lot of fun for a month or two out of the year, you know? It's all right to get some people out to Elbert County and to see that. I can attest, I've been to their home, both of their homes in town there, and they do it upright and it's a lot of fun. The whole county'd just be, wow, that's, that's pretty special, you know? Christmas in the snow, in the horse, I never thought of the horse, that's pretty good, Jared. So, well, hey, that's all, I don't, I don't have much to say, but it sounds a lot of, like, a lot of fun and I'm, I'm all for it. Couple of months a year, thank you.
Another one over here?
My name's Tim Tennis, I live out off one-oh-five also. I can see back into where they're doing all this Christmas thing here. I don't have a problem with Christmas, you can go look, my house is all lit up right now. I don't have a problem with that. The problem I got, like I said at the previous meeting, they're, they're counting on two hundred cars. Eighty-six ain't long enough yet, now we got people who want to bring horse trailers and horses, right? It's just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. Until they can accommodate, there's no way to accommodate all the traffic, all the cars, horse trailers, trucks. And then in the snow, um, and then it's right out my back door, you know, I just, I don't, I'm a sharm. We moved out there, I lived in Kiowa, I came from Parker to Kiowa, it's out there with my horses, with my cattle, just to get away. I keep having to move further and further out because everybody keeps moving in, moving in, moving in, I get it. You can't stop progress, I get it, right? But we moved eighteen miles out, you know, and then it's like, I know it's going to be a big thing because I've worked by the one down there at PPIR. The light, the drive-through lights that they got down there, the traffic from that exit, and it's like in between Fountain and Pueblo, right? Middle of nowhere. The traffic goes from that exit, five or six miles up I-25, to go see these lights. Us as a family used to go to that one in Ellicott, that piece of junk one in Ellicott, because there wasn't anything close, I get it, everybody likes Christmas lights. You know, I think they're going to get more than their two hundred cars, I really do. I mean, I think it, it's a good idea, I, I think they would bring a lot of people out there. Like you were saying, they were, you know, they're, they're doing Christmas. Well, at the original meeting, you know, they wanted to do weddings, they wanted to do, you know, they had all these other things they want to expand on. So, it's not going to be limited to Christmas. I don't see, I don't buy that at all. You know, you get into Christmas, you start making a ton of money, hey, we'll start doing weddings, hey, we'll do Easter egg hunts, we'll do, you know? They're, they're just going to keep going and going, you're going to bring more cars out there and that's just, that's my home. That's where I got my horses, that's where I ride my horses, that's where I got my cattle. I'm just trying to protect what I, what I moved out there to do, you know? And that was to be out there with my animals and just be away from everybody else, you know? That's it. So, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, further comment? Okay.
I'd just like to say, well, first of all, Josh Newton, I live in Elbert, right off of one-oh-six area. We are Colorado natives, just moved back a couple of months ago, moved away for work. Anyways, where I lived before was in Oklahoma, they had the drive-through Christmas thing, never seen anything like it before. Took the kids, absolutely loved it, I mean, it was, like I said, it was something that we'd never, never been to before. Didn't even know that was really a thing. So, to do it out here, you know, I think is a great thing. There's, there's a lot of families, lot of housing out in the general Elbert County area that might not want to drive all the way to Denver. You know, to the city to view something like this. And, right, right, people liming, I mean, there's nowhere to go. This, this would be an opportunity for them, you know, to be able to experience what the city people do. And it's, it's, it's a month. You know, I'm, I'm commenting on the Christmas because that's all they're proposing right now. You know, whatever they want to do in the future, that'd be the future. Right now, this is about the Christmas one and, you know, I think it'd be great. It's obviously going to have traffic, but they, they've worked that out and, yeah, I just, like I said, I, I think it'd be a great thing. We participated in horse parades, Christmas parades, and rode horses in it, kids love it, I mean, just think it'd be a, a really great deal, so.
Thank you.
Hi, Brandy Snelling, eighty-six and one-oh-five. It's kind of interesting, all the people that want this, it's not in their backyard. I understand it's for one month, but it's one month of hearing Christmas music every night. Believe me, I love Christmas, I mean, Christmas exploded in my whole house, bathrooms, kitchen, everywhere. I mean, if you ask me, I would put Christmas up in October, but I'm banned. So I love Christmas too, but do I want to come home with traffic every single night backed up? You know, my fifteen-minute drive turning into forty-five minutes because I'm stuck waiting for people to get in to the Christmas lights because, you know, I'm waiting for everyone to get in. What, like Tim said, you know, during snowstorms, what, I mean, it's a hill on eighty-six and it is a very dangerous hill when you're going up and down that, because it's blind. You cannot see people coming in and out of there, so it's dangerous. I mean, yes, I get that they did a CDOT survey or whatever, but it is not safe. I have a nineteen-year-old who gets off of work and has to come home at eight-thirty at night and I do not want her to get stuck in traffic waiting, trying to get home in a snowstorm. So, do I want this in my backyard? No. So, there's going to be traffic, there's going to be excessive noise because they were going to have Christmas music blaring. And yes, I love Christmas music too, but it's completely silent out there. And that Christmas music is going to be excessive, even if it's quiet. I mean, I can hear the neighbors' goats, I can hear the cows, and I love that, I mean, that is great. But do I want to hear Christmas music all the time for a month, two months, three months? No. So, it's great, yes, it's wonderful that it's great, but do I want it in my backyard? No. So, thanks.
Thank you. Usually you get one, one comment.
I already spoke, but I have a question.
Well, I didn't allow them to speak again, so it's, no. Yeah, no, go ahead, you can stand up and make a comment, but that's it, you and you and that's it. Up to the microphone.
I mean, yeah, I, I get y'all's concern about traffic, I think everybody's, doesn't want bad traffic. But, I mean, I'm sure y'all have policies in place to make sure that they mitigate that properly. You know, I know you're concerned about the music, but, I mean, if you go to any modern Christmas drive, walk-through, drive-through.
Address it if you could, address it does, and then we'll cover your questions.
Any, any modern thing with the music, no one hears it and I go to all these things because they're all F- Any, any modern thing with the music, no one hears it. And I go to all these things because they're all FM transmitters, so all you do is hear it in your car. So, there's no blaring music of any kind.
Okay, thank you. Now your question.
So I'm just curious on this map, how many other special use permits for businesses are there out there?
I'm can patch. Well, it's on eighty-six. Okay, any further comments? All right, close down public comment now. Let's see, we had a few questions come out of this. Yes, but I want to give the applicant what they should talk to. Couple of things came out of the comments that people suggested. One was that it was going to start out like this and grow to something different. And between the applicant and maybe staff, could you guys go over the process in growing an S U R? Because that's, that, that, that was a common question I heard.
Yes, sir, absolutely. If you don't mind staff addressing.
No, please, please do.
Certainly add to it. Um, staff did a work with the applicants on this project. Again, as mentioned, their original proposal and what was presented early on was, was a much bigger sort of everything potential. Um, it has been narrowed down to what you've heard tonight very specifically. Um, the notes that you see on the screen, I know they're a little bit hard to see. This is a clip from the actual S U R exhibit, and these are notes that are specific to what would be approved tonight, and it is very limited. It is limited in the days, um, the number of days, the season, the days of the week and the hours. So those are all parameters that are already proposed to be in place. There are some other items even about, um, you know, the parking and the, the lighting and the sound and things like that are also regulations that are in place in addition to these. And so I did want to point out that these are on the exhibit and would be, um, the applicants would be held to these. And so anything different, if they want to expand in the future to another holiday or something in the summer or whatever, it would require an amendment to this S U R or an additional S U R. So it would come back before the planning commission come before the Board of County Commissioners as well as go through that review process. There is also, as you all know, in place with an S U R, if complaints, if there were issues, there's, you have the authority to bring it back before you to see if there's another, right to put another condition or see if there's some way that it needs to be addressed or revoked in the future.
Okay. Thank you, because that can answer my question as to what they needed to do to expand. So that's what I was trying to get across to. Folks, because that limits your possibility of growing unless they come back before. So the next one was a concern. I think lighting was, was brought up, but I think there was mention of shielding, so if you could speak to that, please.
Yes, sir. Um, can I speak to the other part too, or should we just move forward from?
No, please do.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir. Um, so I just want to clarify because they do bring up a very valid point. When we held the community meeting at that time, we have gone through, we've been in this process for two years. Uh, we were in Douglas County and then we came through at a different property location that we did not end up obtaining. And so this is now our second time or a property now that we have owned. And so here we are before you today. And in the initial process, we were encouraged to dream as big as we possibly could. So that's what we started to do. But this is our dream, is the Christmas drive-through light path. This is where it started. This is what we want to focus on. Uh, and so that's why it's been dwindled down and revised because we did realize the future plans are so in the future, they may not even come to fruition. We may not come back before you with those proposed plans. We just did what we were encouraged, and so that's why it's been reduced to this point. So I just want to clarify that for them. Um, as far as the, uh, lights, do you want to?
Yes, with the lights, you know, we've been in contact with the Dark Skies program. Uh, we plan on using LED Christmas lights, and they have said that they have not seen anything, have not really done extensive studies on Christmas lights and what they affect with like viewing the Milky Way or anything pertaining to that. We do plan on, like, uh, is in the picture is, uh, you know, putting up screenings, temporary fences to block any kind of headlights coming into neighbors' properties. And, um, any kind of lights, you know, wrapped up in trees or anything, we're going to do our best that we can do to, uh, block that from the neighbors, but again, it is, I believe, three days a week, you know, in December and like ended, end of November to beginning of January. So it wouldn't be any more light pollution than what is like in a neighborhood when people put up Christmas lights, I believe.
Okay. Uh, the next, um, item that I think was spoken about was traffic. And kind of the concerns, is there an area to where they pull off and go through kind of an entrance area? Can you address that, which might speak to the traffic?
Uh, yes, sir. So we met with CDOT and we were in connection with them for over a three-month period. We did have a gentleman by the name of Bruce. I cannot remember his last name, but he's the gentleman who approves all sites and drive-throughs. He had come out to our property, looked to the right and looked to the left, and there's over a thousand-foot clearing view from the hill that was spoken about. And he said there is no sight impairment from when people do come up to that hill point. We have done extensive math and studying on how many vehicles would fit in a one-mile pathway as well as how many vehicles will fit onto the property before the light path even begins. So, before the parking lot gets done, we will be weaving traffic in and out. And if it gets to a point that it gets that big and traffic does start to get backed up, we do plan to go to online ticket sales only to where people would not be able to come except for during that designated time to limit any sort of traffic congestion. Because that is the very last thing we would want is for someone's life to be put in danger, um, coming to an event. In addition, what's really important to note that I'm not sure people are aware of is CDOT has restricted us to have, um, Colorado State Patrol officers during our events and during the hours of operation helping to direct traffic onto the site. That is part of our conditional approval for the year of twenty-twenty-five. Because we don't know exactly how much traffic this is going to bring. So they want to keep things safe. We want to keep things safe. And so that's what they're doing and we're agreeing to, to help limit any safety concerns that might arise from an excessive amount of traffic.
Okay, okay. Um, the other question I was going to bring up, which you actually answered in your, in your comments there, was the involvement from CDOT. I kind of wanted to know the extent so these folks know how much it was evaluated, so. There's other questions to follow. So, did I cover everything? Do you guys have anything that people brought up? Do you guys around here think?
No, no, no. I have a list of questions, so.
Okay, well, what I'm looking at, did I, did I cover all the questions that came from the citizens? Did you get? Okay. Okay, now what we'll do, since we've got the questions that came out of, out of citizen comments, now we'll go around the board. And each of us will. Okay?
Yes, sir.
John?
I have one question. I just have one. And what I noticed in here and reading through, because it's very thorough.
No, sir. We did have Thursday as a proposed day, but I think for now, especially in this first year, we're going to just stick with Friday, Saturday, Sunday with the exception of the full week of Christmas week. So this year that would fall on the twenty-third through that Friday. Yes, sir.
Jennifer, do any of the maps associated with this, uh, used by special review, um, give any kind of indication of the proximity of homes to this property?
No, sir, just the zoning map.
Has there been, has there been any kind of, what I call sightlines done between the property and those homes?
Between this property and those homes. Um, only if the applicant has done that and could speak to that, not to my knowledge.
Do you have any sightline, uh, depicting what would be the view from those neighboring homes into the property? Are they above the property? Below the property? Are there, is there any near-in blockage to the light and, and, and so on to the property?
Uh, yes, so the closest home would be, if you could go to the one with the, um, that shows like the full. Yeah. So, the home just to the east right there, that long strip, that's our closest neighbor house. His house will be, and I did like a Google Maps drawing to see kind of how far he was, and he's roughly three hundred feet from where our closest lights will be to his actual house. Uh, everybody else's properties and houses are over a thousand-plus feet away, uh, per the, the Google Maps drawing us distance. We're actually, so, we owned a property with a star and the two below it. That's the total one hundred and twenty acres. So the middle one is, it goes up to a big hill and starts dropping back off into a bunch of trees, which you, which is the, um, where she showed the picture of our property. It's all tree, the whole forty acres is all tree like that. And so a lot of it is going to be blocked from any kind of sight distance that anybody could see, uh, the lights.
Well, yeah, obviously the property due to the south is yours, so there's no, there's no potential cause for, for, for concern there. But to the property to the, to the west, there's, is there no, is there a residence on that property to the west?
Uh, no, sir. It's just eight hundred acres of, uh, a gentleman that leases it for cattle.
Okay. Um, and then to the north?
To the north, uh, there is a gentleman. I'm kind of surprised he's not here. Uh, we've been in contact with him. Uh, he sits up high on a hill, so he overlooks our entire property. Like, we can't get anywhere. We can't see his house or he can't see our house. Or our property.
All right.
And then I believe there's another house to the west, one or two properties up on the northwest side. Um, there's a house there. We haven't, uh, I'm not sure the address, but we haven't been able to catch that person like in it, coming in or out when we've been out there. Uh, we've only met, uh, the gentleman named Jake because, uh, he's right here at the feed store, and we've popped in there to make sure.
Okay. And so those properties were also inclusive in the, in the notification process? Okay. Regarding noise, so I've heard two things, you know, people are concerned about, you know, any kind of loudspeakers or general noise, you know, from, you know, what would be the Santa's Village and so on. Uh, and then I heard someone say they would use a localized FM transmitter for, for the audio portion of the, of the drive-through. So which, which one is it?
Our ultimate goal is to have, when you drive through, you come into like a scene, so like Frosty the Snowman, let's take for instance, and the song Frosty the Snowman be playing. So our goal is to have just speakers turned down enough where you can hear it inside your car, but not loud enough to where you can hear it across property lines. We've actually bought a DB meter and went to the furthest point to, uh, Kelly, that's his name, to the east of us. I went to his property line. We got in the car and turned the radio all the way up as loud as we could. Yeah, and, uh, inside the car, the DB meter was reading almost a hundred DBs inside the car. At his property line, we were down to like thirty or forty DB, which I believe Edward County's is like fifty, forty-five to fifty DB during that time. And so we would be below anything because we definitely wouldn't have a blasting like that.
No, and, you know, to some people's point, you know, I live on sixty acres. My nearest neighbor is almost a half mile away. I can hear his, my screaming out. So, you know, it doesn't take much, and depending upon which way the wind's blowing, for people to be able to hear it. And when you have that amount of traffic in conjunction with, you know, potential speakers, if they're, if they're not, um, very directional speakers, um, you know, the sound can carry, especially, you know, in a, in a flat area, especially in a, in a hard pan area, you know, the, the noise will travel. So, you know, I do sympathize with, you know, the potential of, of, you know, how you will be able to handle your noise abatement. You know, per the regulation, great, but if, you know, if people aren't happy with that, that's not being a good neighbor, in, in my opinion.
Just, uh, one thing to that. I'm actually working with the audio guy to our church that we attend to make sure that we get directional, really directional speakers, because the last thing we want to be is bad neighbors when it comes to music at night. And so that is something that we are working with and, uh, figuring out at the same time.
Okay. Um, you address, I saw in the application and also you verbalized that, you know, regarding traffic concerns and or, you know, any kind of congestion, you're going to have State Patrol there to help, help navigate that. Site profile, noise abatement. When it comes to creating the path through the property, um, and, you know, um, and just being able to, um, maintain, uh, maintain, you know, air quality, are you, are you planning on laying down roadbase or are you just going to, uh, grade the existing, uh, existing dirt?
Uh, we plan on grading just the existing dirt, keeping it as natural as possible, except there are, like I said, there are hills throughout the property, so of course, there is snow out there right now. We would want to keep it safe and not muddy for everybody and track mud onto the road. So we will roadbase some areas. But again, that's like very few areas, but keeping it as natural as possible as we can.
Okay. In the normal conditions associated with, um, acceptance, um, I wrote down A, and I can't remember what A is. Compatibility to the area. That's where I have the greatest heartache. You know, within, you know, within our county, we have an EDC, you know, the, uh, Economic Development Zone, which basically is from Kiowa West. And I understand, you know, your passion for this and wanting to do something that is, you know, again, you know, we have the patch, you know, which has been very successful, and I think they've done a very good job, you know, when it comes to, um, you know, maintaining, uh, maintaining the operations without, you know, a great impact to, um, you know, the surrounding areas. I'm just trying to get a, get my arms around having this that far east of Kiowa considering the neighbors out there, and I'm not sure if this is compatible. I don't know what else you can say to me that would help me, and especially with the, how that determination was made, that you know, for some people, you know, and this is just my opinion, you know, I can be correct if, if, you know, if I'm absolutely wrong. But, you know, for some people, this could be as challenging as, you know, having, uh, uh, a caravan circus come into their, into their neighborhood and operate for a month. That would blow my mind if that happened to me out where I live. You know, so, that's, that's the, you know, the, the challenge I have with this kind of situation. You know, if, if my neighbor, you know, decided to do something like this, even if it's three days a week. You know, especially during the Christmas holidays when, you know, when you're having family and neighbors, you know, coming, coming to your house and they're going, what's going on next door? You know, that's, that's where, where I'm having a hard time accepting this idea. So I don't know what else you can say, but, you know, that's just my opinion.
I know we have talked with, um, you know, at the community meeting, all of our neighbors, our direct neighbor Kelly, we've talked with him. He's brought up his, his concerns about things. Because I think him being right next to us will kind of impact him the most. And, you know, he's brought up his concerns and we've showed him and laid out everything and what we plan on doing to mitigate any nuisance that might pop up. And, um, I mean, he seems okay with it. He's been wanting, it's like, I'm not thrilled about it, but it's your land, you know? You can kind of do what you want with your land. And especially, you know, like I said, we're doing, putting up screens to block light, we're figuring out ways to get traffic off the road as quick as possible, so it doesn't cause traffic. If there is snow on the roads and, you know, like just this past week or two, the road was shut down, we're not gonna open and risk anybody's life driving out there. You know, safeties are number one concern, we wanna make sure everybody is safe, even on and off the property. So even if the roads are open, but it's not safe on our property, we're not gonna open up until it's safe for everybody. And so we feel we're doing everything we can, I mean, like she said in the opening, is we love Christmas, I mean, we're, we're, we have it, we're kinda gonna decorate it, you know, that's just what it is, we, you know, we have tons of decorations that we can't fit on our house anymore. And so it's kinda our way of expressing our love, our joy for the season, the reason for the season, you know, and, and so, I mean, that's really all I can speak to it.
I just wanted to, um, review that we did look at multiple properties, um, we did look in the EDZ zone, um, at three different properties. And unfortunately, they just were not gonna work out for the landscape of what we are trying to do because of how hilled it was or how open it is. And it's right there on the highway. So the landscape of that without the trees, without natural screening, that was one of the reasons why we did not go in the EDZ zone. We did put the offer in when we went through, um, the first meeting with Albert County, uh, to go through the review process or the initial meeting. Um, and we had put the offer in, that property was better, not so as landscaped with buffers, but it was at least off the county highway. So it was actually off of the Kiowa Bennett Road where the new development is going in over there. We, that is the property we had initially wanted to propose this for, um, but unfortunately, again, that fell through. So as we continued to look and we got this one, we thought, well, this would work in a better sense because of how treated it is. So we are not planning to do it out in the second and third, which is where our neighbors' houses are, and they would be able to see it. So, um, we did go to Jake's store four different times because he is not, in answer to your question, I'm a very honest person. Jake was not, who's the house to the north of us, he was not on our radius report, and we were shocked by that. Um, we were like, why wouldn't this be on the radius report? So we went, uh, and we got it directly from the assessor's office, we followed code, I'm gonna use that last word, um, and we, we tried to get in touch with him. Kelly is actually the gentleman who told us who he is and where he works. Um, I met his mother Connie, I met two other employees of his, cause of how many times we tried to go in and contact him. Um, we got on two separate phone calls with Philip, uh, who is also a neighbor that is not here right now, and he's the property with the thick and L shape. To try to talk with him about any concerns he had, so we have been very open to feedback and to trying to listen to what our neighbors are saying. And that's why we have ended up where we have ended up. Yeah. The starred property, the first one, yes sir.
This is where it's gonna be?
Yes sir.
So it's all tree?
Yes sir.
So it's not like it's open property, open land where?
No sir.
You've got shirt here. Yeah, I do, that, that's it for me, I'm done.
John?
Yeah, I've got two questions. Uh, so my understanding is you have a hundred and twenty acres, and this is the first plot? And, uh, would you be looking to expand into those other acres?
Uh, the only thing we've talked about not expanding this, we've talked about eventually creating, putting like a pole barn up, like they mentioned earlier at the community meeting for like weddings or things. But we were planning that like ten, fifteen years.
I'm good, um, my understand is, understanding of that is you have to come back and reapply for future stuff. The other one was horses, horses came up, you know, um, i- is there horses involved?
Uh, so, uh, Jake actually, he brought it up and Jared, sorry, I just got Jake on my mind, Jared brought it up because he said Albert County is a huge horse, you know, even from Texas, I never really got into horses or anything, but he said they love horses out here. And so we've talked about, you know, dedicating like a night, so you don't have cars driving in and out with horses riding. People coming with their trailers, parking, getting their horses out, riding through a few times, just spending like the evening, just dedicated to people riding their horses and then packing up and leaving, and that's the end of the night.
Okay, so it would be horse evening and then car evenings?
Correct.
Yeah, I was concerned about cars and horses on the same.
Yes, me too, no.
Okay, and, and then, um, would there be a staging area to off eighty-six? I saw you had an emergency route there for the emergency vehicles, would that be utilized to bring them in faster?
So at this picture right here, we actually have approval for a, um, going into the property will be a thirty-foot wide drive in, and from there, you can see the tree where it kinda splits on each side of it there.
Mm-hmm.
That's where we'd split into two lanes right there to get more traffic off and into two lanes onto the property. From there, with the other map, other, yeah, map that showed the, uh, drive or the parking lot, sorry. That's, yeah, the parking lot, until that is built and we do Santa's Square, which we're picturing three to four years from now, that'll all be a staging area to weave back and forth traffic to get them off and kinda staged up before they enter the actual drive.
And, and so it wouldn't be backing up down eighty-six too bad because you're staging it on your property?
Correct, we're trying to get people off as fast as possible, and we'll even hire locals to, you know, flag them once they're on the property. CDOT State Patrol will flag onto the property, once they're on, we'll have our own flaggers flagging where they need to go once they're on.
Sounds good to me, that's all I got.
And we calculated sixty cars would fit in that two-lane path there.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'm a former cop, so twenty-one years of being an officer, I know about traffic.
Yes, I'm sure you do.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one last thing. Um, forgive me there, Didi. You know, i- i- if you do have bad weather, are you gonna have, are people, when they buy tickets, do they do it online or by phone call? I mean, it'll just show up?
Right, so initially, it'll just be kind of a first come, first served, come in and drive, because it is out there.
Sure.
We're not expecting two, three, four hundred cars coming the first year. But when it does shift to online purchases, that's what we'll do, is we'll create a website, start doing, we've actually been in contact with website designer, start doing online purchase tickets. In case of severe weather, that ticket will be rolled over to the next open day.
Okay.
That they purchase.
Thank you.
I love Christmas too, and if, uh, it's on my house, you would know. I put as much of Christmas in my ten acres as I can put, but I will tell you that I was in Vegas for a while and they have a huge one of these, and it was awesome, and it was a lot of fun. But there were, it was so noisy and so congested when people, I mean, it just, when they first opened it, I think they had no idea how much they were gonna, how, how like successful it was gonna be. And they weren't quite ready for that when it first, the first couple of years it was open. I think that there's a real challenge, first of, I really love the idea, what you're doing, probably be one of your first customers, but I like John, I'm really concerned about the people in the area and it being, it, it's not complaining with the rest of the people that are out there. I mean, I guess it's not gonna hurt the cows so much, but I do think that there's other people that it is gonna affect, and I'm not, I'm not real thrilled about that either. And I'm really worried about the traffic. I mean, if you go to Broome Field and they have that big, um, patch thing up there, whatever it is, they, they take up one entire lane of the, the, of two eighty-five and, or two eighty-seven, and it's murderous, the traffic there. You, I mean, it's horrible. And the weather, that would really, really bother me too, so I'm really, as much as I would really like to have it, I just don't know that it's a doable kinda thing, and, um, I, I, I'm, I'm really worried about the kind of traffic that it is gonna create out there. Because it is gonna be successful, so if you are able to go ahead with that, just know that it's gonna be successful and you're gonna have your hands really full, I think. I'm just really concerned about all of that. I don't even know how you could afford to put a full-time State Patrol guy on duty either, I mean, that's gonna be an immense expense.
Yes ma'am, and if the traffic does get to that level after our first year, CDOT has told us what that count is, and I don't remember at this time, but they would require us to put in a, in an auxiliary lane. So, that is also in our CDOT conditional traffic study.
That's good to kinda note too.
Yes ma'am.
A lot of bucks for you, but, yeah.
It is, it is, but when it comes to safety, right?
Right.
You gotta just take those things into consideration, it's just hard to say we would need that at this moment without having accurate counts or really how many people would come, right? We just got thirty-nine inches of snow out here, uh, which is very astronomical and, um, you know, people drive in the weather, this is Colorado, obviously the roads will shut down and we would absolutely abide by the law and do the same thing.
Since I've been out here, it's amazed me how many times the roads out here have been shut down, and, uh, it, it's, there's people who work at the school district who go from here out that direction on a regular basis. And they've been stranded more than once, so it, I don't know, it just, as much as I'd like it, I think it's just a little bit much, but I'm just one, I'm just one vote.
So, just a couple of quick easy questions, uh, what's the average speed limit on eighty-six about there?
It is sixty-five miles an hour.
How many actually do sixty-five miles an hour?
We cannot answer that question, but I know what you're getting at.
I figured the answer, I, I knew the answer already.
Sure.
You mentioned that, um, there was a thousand feet of, of view before the hill, um, what that equates to is about, uh, forty cars on that, on that road. So my question becomes, okay, so you're monetizing this event, monetizing this, this drive, I'm assuming. And so you're gonna, you're gonna stop folks, um, to look to pee, uh, for the first few years while this is going on, and you're gonna create a choke point at some level. And so the other question becomes, you know, if somebody come flying up over the hill at sixty-five, seven miles an hour, probably not getting by. They're, they're gonna come into a back end of a, of a bunch of stop traffic, and, uh, you're gonna see red. And so I love the idea that you're having, uh, a potential highway patrolman in the area. Um, you're pretty far away from other emergency services, uh, just because of where you're sitting. Um, and so that becomes a, a problem for me as well. Uh, direct compatibility, you're sitting in the middle of a, a, a number of fields, you know, you got, right, these cows don't, they're not in here. Horses might get a little, have fun being spooked a little bit.
Gives them an excuse.
Yeah, it does, and, and the wildlife, um, in the area, which is probably another draw for folks that are coming out there, um, will, will be impacted, right? They will be driven away from that some level. And of course, they'll be abused too as well. But the next question becomes the new ones, right, so I, I don't care what you do, Robert, you are correct. Uh, you could hear a whisper from a neighbor, you know, three, three hundred yard away in some cases. And, uh, you know, when you're talking about the, the amount of noise, the amount of cars coming through there, the, the noise from the automobiles themselves are gonna be enough to impact. And then you'll get, um, and, and I'm sure it's probably easy to, to say you're not gonna see a lot of pollution out there, uh, but you are gonna see some, and you'll see a lot of white pollution, LED's aside, by the way, I've detected as well, so. And, and we didn't do this, another comparison that was done was, you know, people wanna drive into the city to, to go, go through and see lights, and would it be cool to do this in the country? Yeah, probably would be cool in the country, um, but you don't have the congestion of populations, and you're creating an artificial, uh, area for people to come view, and so to me, that's kinda problematic as well. I love the idea of, of taking horses through there, but again, traffic problems become the next random of that. Cause if you're talking a two-horse car, or, or a twenty-horse hog, you know, you're going to be, uh, backing up even more than with just regular car truck to go through there. I, I'm not asking you a lot of questions, I'm just giving you where I'm coming from on this. So if you can make me feel comfortable, you didn't make Robert feel comfortable with your answer on compatibility, I could tell, cause you still itching a little bit. I still don't believe it's compatible with the area, how can you, how can you assure me it's compatible?
Well, we also plan to do a Christmas tree farm at some point, um, and we did not include that in the S U R, cause that's not something that is needed for a special use review. Um, and so that's where we're also getting to the compatibility piece of staying true to the agricultural section of this area. Um, we also do plan to plant wildflowers to recreate the ground, I think we did put that in our proposal. Because we really are trying to be as mindful as we possibly can of this area to not disturb it. I mean, I even asked him, he's a hunter, I was like, what about the deer? How are we gonna keep the antlers from getting, you know, caught in our Christmas lights? Cause I don't want an deer to be running around with, you know, obscured vision, um, or be in that air, in that type of space. Um, so again, I understand what you're saying, it is seasonal, it is only twenty-four days. I know it says thirty, that's because of the week of Christmas, but, and again, with weather, I don't think it would be open that full entire time. Because we do live in Colorado, we do get a lot of snow, I think that there would be days that it does shut down. So it is less than nine percent of an entire three hundred and sixty-five day frame. So that's more or less, I mean, if we were trying to keep this open year-round or do a Christmas in July, like, I could understand where some more of that's coming from. But it is less than nine percent of the total time of a, in a year basis, so, um, yeah.
And with the traffic like you brought up, with the hills, uh, we have, you know, we saw the patch, they put out the big signs that said, slow down, you know, patch turning in ahead. Uh, we've actually talked with Jennifer about, you know, is, is that any like a sign permit, but she said, you know, you have to work with CDOT, cause it's a state highway. And so that is our plan, is to work with CDOT to put signs at both ends of the hill before it to warn people during those times that there could be traffic at the bottom of the hill. To give them time to slow down if they are going eighty-five, you know, slow down going over the hill. I know at the bottom of that hill, cause I do have a, kind of a camera there, just to take in, um, just kinda watching oversee, who kinda stops it, takes a, you know, look at the sign and stuff. And that is a big pull-off just from us being there, people slow way down, cause they know that's a pull-off at the bottom of the hill, and they pull off, use the bathroom, you know.
Feed squirrels.
Yeah, feed squirrels, like, things like that, right there at the bottom of the hill. And so it'll be, I believe it'll be new for people that have never been through that area to, they're coming out, they don't know that's a pull-off. But I think people that have traveled that pretty often kinda know they can start slowing down there because they do need a pull-off or something. Like I've had many conversations with people, they're like, oh, I'll pull off here every time I travel to pee on the side of the road.
We don't need to be at every time, and there's probably, I didn't see that.
Signage is not included at this time, no.
Okay, um.
Wait a minute.
Or me, ma'am, hold on.
I'm one of the applicants.
Well, yes, and I haven't asked my question.
Oh, well, I have something to say about the compatibility and something.
Okay.
If you would pull up the map of where the properties are? If you would pull up the map of where the properties are. My name is Vicki, by the way. Where our property is, yeah. Okay, so where the star is, is, is the only portion of our property that will be impacted by the Christmas drive-through. As you look at that, that's flat, but the first part of the property is down low, and then the second part and the third part, you go up a hill, and then it goes down. So the-
That's near, near-in blockage.
Okay.
He explained that.
Okay, well, the two properties that are here tonight are down in that gully, so they won't even be able to see the lights, they won't be able to see them at all. The other person that is directly west of us, you, he'll be able to see them, and so will Kelly, the property that is right next to us. But the other two that we were to notify are down, and they can't see them. There's only five properties in that surrounding area, there is no more people that are out there.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you. All right. I think we were, got our questions answered, correct? All around here? Okay, two comments, one, Jennifer. Um, we have an ordinance on the books or a regulation that covers noise.
Yes, sir.
What does it say?
I can pull it up, I can't quote it off the top.
Well, does it give a decibel limit of any kind? Does it?
Yep, I have it, actually, I have that information. Um, let me, sorry, one moment. Um, okay, permissible noise levels according to CRS twenty-five dash twelve dash one oh three in a residential area is fifty d B A during hours of seven P M. to seven A M. and must be minimum twenty-five feet from property line.
Okay, okay, good. All right, so we've established that.
To be clear, this is agricultural, not residential.
Yes, sir, this came directly from Albert County's zoning regulation section.
So, fifty decibels, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, all right, that's one of the things, so that'll lead to noise. So, compatibility, last time, I mean, through my time here, so, we've approved a human waste facility, okay? How many wedding venues have we approved?
Two.
Okay, all right. Um, have you guys been privy to the animal sanctuaries that we approved? Okay, have you been? You know how many hemp rows we've approved?
Again.
No, no, yes, we are. I'm getting to, no, we are talking about, and this is my time, and we are talking about compatibility. So, no, I'm asking a question of you guys. Um, how many-
You're asking the question in, in the wrong context.
Okay.
So the context is-
So, do, how many medical treatment centers have we approved?
Have a separate session after this.
No, I'm asking you guys a question because I wanna know if you know. So, how many medical treatment centers have we approved?
Again.
Okay, how many airfields have we reviewed? You guys know? Two? Okay, um, how many gun ranges?
I have never approved a single gun range ever.
Okay, have you guys? Okay, good, thank you.
I can remember one.
You got one? Okay, okay. You guys remember the cricket field?
Yep, how many of us approved it versus?
Got approved.
How many of us voted against it?
Okay, ultimately got approved.
That's gonna be the ultimate question.
Okay, got approved, it was approved. How many junk yards have we approved?
Zero.
No.
Okay.
I have not.
Okay, you haven't, Kevin, I know. How many cell towers?
One.
Okay. How many ranching, farming, multiple, correct? These are all businesses. How many propane yards have we approved?
Zero.
Uh, no, we've approved.
I have approved it.
Okay, I know you haven't.
You're asking personal questions, that's why.
No, I'm just, good, thank you. How many auto and truck repair facilities have we approved?
Zero.
Okay?
And what now?
Auto, truck repair facilities.
I don't know any in county, but I know it was, is it?
Well, out in the sticks, we've approved, I've, I'm, in memory, I can say three. Auto and truck repair facilities, but when it comes to-
I can remember one related to motorhomes.
Okay, that's good, because that was the next one, how many RV repairs facilities? Okay, how many rodeo events and rodeo areas have we approved? Um, solar fields. Okay, that's still, that one's still up in the air.
I got one on my roof.
Yeah. Um, do you guys remember the EMS facility with the chopper landing area?
Nope.
Okay, you remember the lumber yards?
Nope.
Remember the pumpkin patch?
Lumber hasn't been here for a long time.
Okay, the horse arenas?
Nope.
Yeah, we have, 'cause it dried up here off eighty-six. Okay, the public arenas that have been brought before us, and then here's some of the more private businesses, you have attorneys, we've got ostrich farms, we've got, uh, llama farms, and the last one is a trailer repair facility. So here's what we're getting to, and what I'm saying is that, uh, you know, we approve all different kind of things, and it looks, and they've come through this board. So when it comes to compatibility, based on what I've seen, it's really hard to judge something on compatibility, because there's been so many different things brought before, at least, and I will say in my history. So, with that, kind of between that and, the point is that the noise, you know, we do approve gun ranges all over, and we allow people to shoot on their property, and I don't know how many people do that out there, I know, I do, that's noise, so.
So, so, so let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
When it comes to the neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
What is the, what is their ability to properly register a complaint and have it, and have appropriate enforcement?
Well, they turn in a complaint based on the S U R requirements.
Right, but, 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 I mean, just-
And I think that would-
Jennifer, is that something that you, you can address?
We're, we're not picking on, on staff here, but we don't have an enforcement officer.
We do have a enforcement officer on-
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he came on, what, eight months ago, a year ago, something, right?
No.
I think it's newer than that, within the last few months.
Oh, last few months?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so-
Newest person.
So, you know, to maybe put the surrounding neighbors at ease, is that something you can describe in three lines or less?
How to make a complaint to that person?
The complaint process and how it's analyzed with basic-
Yeah, and how it's-
Basically relying on the S U R.
Right.
Sure, that, we have a full-time person who handles, um, essentially code enforcement or code complaints, so they would reach out to that person, let them know what the issue was, and then that person investigates, um, goes and talks to them, gets, right, there's a whole sort of process involved, um, because of the S U R, they could, they would work with us, let us know, we would help with what the S U R outlines and what's allowed. Um, and then, again, if there were multiple complaints, we could bring the S U R back to you all to be re-reviewed, essentially, and then additional conditions could be added, it could be-
Right.
Um, you know, revoked at that time, it could be changed, et cetera.
I just wanna make sure the general public understands how they're empowered-
Yes.
-to, to, to, you know, if necessary, to make a complaint.
Absolutely. And the S U R exhibit is recorded, it's an official document, anyone could pull it up, and it does have, like I said, a, a number of various things outlined in terms of the limitations of what's allowed.
So there's an official protocol which is, you know, which establishes, you know, what can be done and how it can be done, just like anything in law enforcement, if there's an understood protocol, then, you know, people understand what they can and cannot do.
Yes, sir, and it is also in the S U R explanation of what you need to do, and how to complain if an S U R is violating, so that is in there for people.
My point, all I'm trying to make is compatibility, 'cause when you drive around Albert County, I tell you what you see, stuff that hasn't been through an S U R process and probably never will, you see a little bit of everything, so. So anyway, with that, should we call for a vote?
Did you wanna add a condition?
No.
No, no, wasn't looking at you.
Did-
I, I do, I do not. I, I'm gonna vote against.
Mm-hmm. Everybody probably will.
And I'll make a motion that we recommend approving the Board of County Commissioners to, for, like, Christmas in the sticks, S U R two zero two four, two five two two. I'm sorry.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a second, so I think we better go around the table and do a, do a vote. Second's John.
It's a new guy. John number two.
John number two. So let's go around the board, and, uh, let's do a individual vote, 'cause I know it'll be a split vote.
I, I vote aye.
I vote aye also. I think these people have put a lot of thought and effort into this to make something that would be very nice for this community.
I also vote aye, because it does meet the stipulations in current rules and procedures of Albert County.
I vote aye.
And if I, uh, I'm sorry, I vote aye, and I agree with Dan and Van. Um, they definitely brought up the good issues, and I'm agreeable.
And I vote nay, even though my heart breaks for it, but I don't see the compatibility. I, I do think that people who live out there, that far out, that, I think that they're, I, I just think it's a reach too far. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
And I vote nay, because it does not, uh, meet the A, C, and D of the restrictions required for the S U R. Um, I also wished that there had been signage, that would have helped take one of those away in the conversa, in the conversation. I asked Jennifer if that was included in the proposition, it was not. So, the only thing I would say is, even if we added the condition of signage, I would still vote nay.
Good, thank you. Motion, motion approved? You've got the vote, correct? Okay, thank you, folks. Can we call for a, uh, what is it, adjournment?
I motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you, guys, for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you had been in Vegas with, when I've been out there, and they put that thing-
Did the cell tower one?
As a Vegas-
Oh, we haven't, we haven't, there's somebody-